Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Will you please call the roll?
Matt Rogers.
Present.
Beth McLennan.
Present.
Scott Gingold.
Yep.
Andrew Gallimore. Mary Beth Burns.
Present.
Mirna Eravallo.
Here.
And Violetta Cullen.
Present.
With that, we have six members present and we do have a quorum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz, Planning and Zoning Administrator Lori Pearson, and Assistant City Attorney Mario Tretto. This is a formal meeting and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to advance -- who address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from the staff on documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next persons who wish to make any statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellate will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Then, the board will close the record and begin deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and be sure to sign in on the provided sheet. We are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you may be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We do have three items on the agenda this evening, although the matter of 3146 Harrison Street has been re-noticed and will be heard at our November 18th meeting. So we actually have two matters on the agenda tonight. 1231 Hinman Avenue is the applicant present. And 715 Milburn Street, I see them present as well. So with that, we will move on to the first matter of our agenda this evening, which is the approval of the meeting minutes from October 7th. Has everyone had an opportunity to look through those and are there any changes or edits?
Yeah, I was -- somebody was impersonating me there because I seconded a motion and made a comment at some point and I wasn't there, so. So I don't know who.
I was pretending to be you that evening.
That works, great.
If not, is there a motion for approval of the October 7th minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
Any -- a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, they will be approved with that one small edit. With that, we will move on to the first matter of business for this evening, which is 1231 Hinman Avenue. If you would please read that into the record.
Julie M. Lisca, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct a two-story addition. The applicant requests 38.1% building lot coverage where a maximum 30% is allowed and 34.2% currently exists. Zoning code section 6827. 52% impervious surface coverage where a maximum 45% is allowed. Zoning code section 68210A. And a three-foot south interior side yard setback where five feet is required. Zoning code section 6828A3. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted September 9th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated July 21st, 2014, site plan, elevations, preservation commission certificate of appropriateness dated October 15th, 2014, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, preservation commission meeting minutes from September 16th, 2014, Spark draft meeting minutes of October 8th, 2014, and ZBA meeting minutes excerpt from previous variance request from October 15th, 2013.
Thank you. At this point, if I could have anyone who may be speaking to us in the matter of 1231 Hinman Avenue be sworn, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. If you'd please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julie Lisca. I'm with Lisca Architects. We're at 40 -- 44 North Lincoln Avenue in Chicago.
Thank you. And if you would please tell us about the proposed project.
Sure. The current property currently has an enclosed porch at a location where we were -- are proposing to remove this porch and build a new addition. The porch was enclosed at some point fairly poorly. It has not been maintained. It's not usable. So the homeowner would like to replace this with something that meets today's building code, is structurally sound, and meets today's energy code as well. Part of this, we will also be achieving a new stair to the basement that they can actually carry a load of laundry down without danger. And a very modest-sized living space and master bedroom space. The impervious coverage is increased beyond what is allowed, but it's increased by about 4%. It already is fairly significantly over. And the existing property is an existing non-conforming lot in that it's 10 feet narrower than the minimum and that it's about 2,400 or 2,440 square feet less than the minimum lot size. So it's a pretty challenging lot to meet the current zoning standards. There any questions?
I have a couple -- I have a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
So I see the new stair to the basement, the exterior stair. Can you talk to me about that?
There is a -- an entrance to the basement that the homeowner would like to maintain. Is that the stair that you're looking at? Yes, they would like to maintain that access to the basement since there is not a width on the property to get sidewalk around either side, north or south of the house. They'd like to maintain a stair down to that basement level.
And from an impervious surface coverage, if you, rather than doing a deck, you did pervious pavers, then you wouldn't be over the requirement?
Yeah, we would still need to have stairs down too because the first -- or that first floor level is significantly higher.
Sure.
They currently have a deck and they do like to use that, so they'd like to replace that existing deck use. We did size it fairly minimally so that we can fit a table and four chairs. The homeowner did say that they were very open to the idea of replacing the front concrete walkway if that would be a way to reduce some of the impervious. That was something that was proposed at the last review meeting.
Were you involved at all in the October 2013 variance request for the two-car garage?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Can you just describe what was done? My understanding, and I wasn't at that meeting, but my understanding from the notes is that the deck was removed in order to make the garage comply with the impervious space requirement.
A portion. There was a rather large deck there to begin with. And so there was a two-level deck that existed. So we removed the lower level of that deck in order to reduce the impervious coverage.
And so this project would rebuild a lower deck?
It would rebuild a deck at the same height that the existing deck is.
The existing remaining deck?
Existing remaining deck, correct.
So just to be clear, you removed some of your impervious surface to get that variance passed. And now with that garage, you're creating a hardship for yourself.
No, they removed the deck in order to equal out the impervious surface that was being created by the garage. So it was a swap for that case.
Right.
There was no new deck constructed between that time and now.
Okay. But what you're asking for is impervious surface, not only for the building but for the deck. And that's a hardship created by yourselves via the garage.
Well, we're looking to replace a use that's existing is what we're looking to do.
Okay.
It's a deteriorated deck that they would like to rebuild in a way that will accommodate the new addition.
To sort of pick up on where she was headed, I have a bit of an issue with the fact that we were trading things before in order to try to keep us below impervious surface. And now, a year later, we are trying to get the impervious surface back up over. So I feel a little bit like we were switched last time and now we're coming back and trying to get the impervious surface back in with this new request.
Okay. Yeah, so we did look at trying to make that deck as small as possible. If you can also see from the new addition that we proposed, that is a minimal footprint in that you can see that the furniture layout, we have space for a couch and a TV and that leaves us just enough room for circulation. And then also the stair to the basement, that needs to meet today's building code. We did look elsewhere in the house to put that stair. There was not anywhere that we could put it, that we got the required code headroom clearance for the stair or the required width for the stair. So we were kind of forced into putting it into this new addition, which ate up a lot of our impervious floor area or building coverage area.
Could you explain briefly how you couldn't get the stair to work under the stairs to the first floor? From the first floor to the second floor?
Because that original stair was probably located without the required head clearance. To put that in, we would have had to change a lot of the original historic bay window in order to move the entry to the basement stair back far enough in order to get head clearance. I think you can see on the first floor plan that there is a closet currently under the stair. There's a door shown to the east of that stair to the first floor. And when you enter at that location, you do not have enough headroom.
Could you please describe the hardship that the property owner will face if the relief is not granted?
Well, they're looking to provide modern amenities in this home, which today would be more than one bathroom. Would also be a master bedroom type suite and a family seating area near the kitchen. Right now, that's not something that they can have in this home just because of that back area that is considered part of the building is not usable. It's also not a structure that can be built upon. Even if it is maintained, the footing is inadequate because it's just the pier footing. So while it is, the second floor is part of an enclosed piece of the house, it is not usable the way it is currently constructed.
When was the house constructed?
The original house, I believe, was, I don't have an actual date, but it was turn of the century. It is part of the historic district.
And when did this owner purchase the property? Did you consider any alternative plans that would impose a little bit less on the zoning requirements?
None of them were -- would allow us to build a stair that would be meeting building code within the house to the basement. Basically, the stair had to be removed in order to have a kitchen and family room setting. And that stair needed to be rebuilt, so that meant that we needed to have enough width to the house in order to get the stair and that TV couch circulation space set up. That's why we needed to get the setback at three feet rather than five feet so we could get that extra two feet width. Currently, that addition we're proposing to tear down is at two feet to the property line, so this is an improvement from that aspect. But in order to fit the.
Is that, but that's not, that three feet, that's not what's driving the lot coverage, is it?
No, it's basically the usage of being able to fit a couch, TV, chair. If you, as you look at the floor plan, you can see it's a very, very modest room that we're looking to add on.
Can you, do you know how many square feet over you are on impervious surface?
I don't have that available.
Melissa knows all.
It's over by just over 300 square feet.
And the deck is 12 by 12-ish?
Ish. I believe it's actually smaller than that.
Well, the width of the back family room's 15, so it's at least 15 by something.
Yes. I'm sorry. It's 15 by 12 feet.
12 by 15 plus.
The stairs.
The really wide stairs. So if you were to change that to impervious pavers and you were to change the front walk to impervious pavers, you would be in a situation where you wouldn't have to ask for a variance for lot coverage, for impervious surface. Is that correct?
I don't know that that, I would have to verify that calculation.
I think Melissa is doing that calculation.
Doing the math now.
I think this family has been used to having a deck that the same level of the kitchen and that's a use that they're very much looking to maintain is what they're looking for.
You and I know that as an architect, your homeowner wants many, many things, but that doesn't necessarily constitute a hardship for the purposes of a zoning variance.
Correct. They would very much like to maintain the use they have if they can.
They could go back to a one-car garage.
That's also no longer a modern amenity and is two parking spaces a zoning requirement? It isn't many.
Now that you have the two parking spaces, you have to keep them.
Correct.
You can't go backwards.
Switching over both the front walkway and the deck to pervious pavers would reduce the impervious surface by about 60 square feet, so variance would still definitely be required.
Wait, say that again? I thought we were over by 300 square feet.
Right. So if you go to pervious pavers, you get a 20% credit.
Okay.
So a 20% credit to both of those areas combined.
I think that's, isn't that 20% credit if they're just regular pavers? If you actually go to full-on pervious pavers, then it's a one-for-one.
It's still only a 20% credit. That's a text amendment that we are looking into, but currently the code just gives the flat 20% to all pavers.
Regardless of what type of paper they actually are.
Was this project under consideration a year ago when we were all talking about the garage?
It was something they would like, they had considered they would like to think about. It was not something that they had asked to have studied in a way that we could determine if things would fit within the footprint that existed there or something smaller or if there were any ways that we could put a stair to a basement elsewhere. That sort of study was not done at that time.
But the concept of building an addition was something that was being sequenced?
I think something they thought about when they, grand scheme, when they bought the house, it would be nice to have if economy was moving upward and onward, if jobs were maintained, et cetera. And it sounds like they found the will to do that and decided to move ahead with studying
Are there additional questions? If there are not, I'll give Ms. Lisca the opportunity to sum up for us and then we will begin deliberation.
Sure. The project proposed is to remove an existing enclosed porch and a second-floor space that is structurally insubstantial and deteriorated. We'd like to replace that with a new enclosed addition. The addition will provide a very modest living or family room on the first floor, a modest master bedroom on the second floor. Will provide some of today's modern living amenities that are expected in most homes, like a second bathroom. And will also provide a safer stair for them to the basement for access. Will also maintain their access to the basement so that they can enter and exit the basement from the rear yard. It does require additional impervious coverage. It does require a setback of three feet instead of the five feet. This is an improvement over what is currently there and replaces a structure that is quite a bit of an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I didn't ask because I didn't see anybody, but I assume no one else is here to speak on this matter. So with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberations. We've had a bit of discussion about a number of topics in terms of impervious surface, what is required by building code, things like that. Obviously, if building code requires it, we don't have the opportunity to change those sorts of things, but I will ask for general thoughts from the board.
So I, there, it sounds like there are more than one of us that are troubled by the fact that this applicant was here a year ago and appeared to make a trade-off in order to secure a zoning variation that we granted with respect to the impervious surface space on the property. And within the standards we have to consider, as Mary Beth pointed out, you know, that hardship seems to be self-created. That said, I'm also kind of wrestling with the idea that that's a hyper-technical application of the rules and that if this applicant had been applying for everything at once a year ago, we might have given it some due consideration in the interest that this is a good attempt to modernize a property that doesn't have modern amenities. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I feel yet, but I, it does seem like an overly rigid application of the standards to think of it in black and white terms that way.
I can't remember if you were here a couple of weeks ago, but the fact that Mr. Gallimore is here reminds me of the project that we discussed that was exactly this situation, which was they applied for them both at the same time. And we said no because you're creating your own hardship. So this applicant took the other way around, which is to get the garage, which everybody knows we will approve because you have to meet the requirements for parking, and then come back and, you know, ask for the sun, the moon, and the stars. And I think that they're, that while they've done a really good job by decreasing the degree of non-conformity along the one side, and they're pinned up against the wall on the other side by trying to keep access to the basement. So there's really no moving anything from side yard setbacks there. I think they do have an opportunity to reduce the degree of non-conformity of impervious surface. I don't think this is the minimum necessary. It's what they'd like, but it's not the minimum necessary. And I think we've traded off some, I mean, we've given them the garage and other stuff, so.
I would be willing to entertain the changing, or requiring the change in the proposal to go to the impervious, or the, excuse me, the pervious pavers. And even though technically it still would require the variance, sort of knowing in my mind that the pervious pavers were going to actually get it down to an acceptable, like getting to the end, you know, even though theoretically we're still over, we're not kind of.
I think even if you go to the pervious pavers, now you don't need the steps. So now you're reducing the actual degree of coverage anyhow.
Right.
And you could probably tighten up because you don't have to have railings and you're not worried about people falling off, you can probably tighten up a little bit of the square footage of the patio as well.
Right. They might even, or get a little bit more square footage because it's not, you know, another foot here and there or whatever.
So that, I think that sounds like a good suggestion. And I don't, I wasn't at the meeting you're referring to, but I know things like this come up. And it would be a shame to allow zoning applicants to sequence their applications in order to evade the rules.
I agree.
However, every property is unique. This one is narrower than standard and it's a structure that exists on the property and that is not, it's not a modern home.
No, I completely get that. I've got no problem with the addition because they've done a really good job trying to keep that tiny and keep it appropriate. It's really adjusted.
Okay, so with the modification where we would require, rather than the deck, to have pervious pavers, then perhaps that is really the minimum change possible and necessary in order to get this project done and modernize and otherwise make saleable, you know, a property that's behind the times.
Yes, I would agree with that because, you know, yeah. The addition's pretty tiny.
So we like to say that we don't want to redesign projects, so how would we move forward with feeling like that? Looking at you, Chair.
I mean, I look at it one of two ways because I personally am not willing to go the pervious paver route. I think that for an applicant to come twice in the two years that they've owned the home to request variations, and I'm not accusing them of anything, but obviously the one improvement that's already been made is the one that we really can't take away, which is the parking with the garage. So my personal feelings on it are that it doesn't meet the standard in terms of the applicant creating their own hardship. But I also only have one vote, so if the general thinking on the board is that everyone else can live with the pervious pavers, we can make that our determination and then it's really up to the applicant to determine whether or not they want to live under that application or that determination from the board. Obviously, if they don't feel that pervious surfaces, pervious pavers are going to solve and meet what they need it to do, then they've gotten a determination from us even though it's not exactly what they want. It's not an outright denial. It's not an outright approval. It's, this is what we're willing to give.
But we're sort of within our rights to say, you proposed a deck, we won't give you a deck, but we will give you a patio.
I mean, I think it comes down to we aren't willing to grant that level of impervious surface. So because of the fact that some members of the board feel that granting a pervious paver, it's not an outright denial of the impervious surface coverage, but it is more so an adaptation of that.
You could frame it a little differently and say that. You could frame it a little differently and say that this proposal as put to us is not the minimum change necessary in order to obtain the relief needed, and that we would be willing to consider or condition approval on a more minimal change, which would be reflected by the requirement that the deck portion of the project be scrapped in favor of pervious pavers.
Is it not possible just to reopen and ask the applicant if they want a continuance? I know you hate doing that.
I hate doing that because what we do is we open ourselves up to, we're having an open conversation with the applicant that should have been had before our record was closed.
Yeah, but we don't typically get to discuss.
So if someone wants to make a motion to reopen the record...
One option for you guys, if the applicant were to switch the front walkway and the deck over to pervious pavers and lose the stairs, it would put them at just under 50% impervious surface coverage, so you could motion to approve it with that impervious surface, and that way, if they would rather have a smaller deck, so long as the numbers come out as a wash, they would have that option.
When you're doing the math on the front walk, are you literally doing just the front walk, or are you doing the sidewalk?
I adjusted the sidewalk. I did 27 times three.
Okay. So if they, see, this is where we get to the minimum change, right? They could actually get better numbers by changing the sidewalk along the side as well. And that's a determination they can make, if they want to swap out the sidewalk on the side of the house with pavers to be able to get a patio in the back. So I'm not sure I'm buying the 50% yet because that doesn't include anything on the side. So for me, the number would have to be less, a smaller percentage than that. So...
So there was a question about whether or not we wish to reopen the record. Is there a motion to reopen the record and have a conversation with the architect?
I don't know.
I'm comfortable. I don't need that personally.
Okay. So not hearing a motion, then the record remains closed, and we remain in deliberation. I guess probably one of the easiest ways to do this will be to go through our standards and find out where we have our disagreements. I think I know where they are, but to see if there is a workable solution here that makes everybody happy, or I guess makes everybody unhappy, which is the sign of consensus. So we will, we have to find that seven standards are met to grant a variation, so we will go through those standards, and I will encourage everyone to be active participants instead of me just kind of giving my take on it because I know there will be some disagreement with my take. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, and property values of adjoining properties. I believe that this standard is met. We are talking about impervious surface, which, as we know, can cause water retention issues, but I do not believe that we are granting, or that we are creating any sort of a great problem with this particular requested project. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. We do know that the zoning ordinance looks at trying to maintain a housing stock, which is attractive to our modern families, and to make sure that the amenities that one expects to find in a house, even though a house was built over 100 years ago, someone expects to have certain features in that home, and I don't believe that what is being requested here is totally out of expectation with that. So I would say that standard number two is met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. This is a substandard lot that we find a number of in Evanston. We often are challenged with how do we have setbacks, how do we have lot coverage, impervious surface, things like that in these types of matters. For me, this one is met. The difficulty that is being created is really due to the fact that this is a very small lot in terms of width, which cuts into the overall numbers that can be obtained. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. This one I do have a bit of a problem with. I understand the applicant's desire to keep a number of the things that they have, as well as to update, but in terms of impervious surface, I feel that the requested amount exceeds what I'm willing to grant in this particular case. I know other people probably have disagreements with that, so I will ask anybody who feels the standard is met to just say that they feel it is met.
I feel this standard is met. To me, the raw percentage on the impervious surface coverage is certainly affected by the substandard nature of the lot, and if we were looking at a larger lot, obviously the percentage would be at least a little bit lower.
I agree with Scott.
I agree.
I'm with Matt on this.
Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. We expect all home improvements to raise property values. That's not what this is meant to address. This is more to address the fact that if someone were creating an apartment to try to rent. So I believe that standard number five has been met. Number six, and this is the one that I think we're going to have the discussion on, is the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. As I stated, the fact that the home was purchased two years ago or about that time, and we have requested two variations, the first one, which was granted, and in that one, there was a little bit of horse trading about impervious surface. I believe that the applicant sort of chose what they viewed as being important in modernizing their home, and so I believe that this standard has not been met because the choice was made that a two-car garage was the most important thing for them to come in and ask for a variation on. I would have much rather have seen everything kind of come as a package so we knew what the end was here, and I understand that that's not always possible, but I would have rather we had a request this year as opposed to one last year and one this year. So I don't believe this standard is met, but I will listen to anybody else who has a differing opinion.
So I agree with you that a rigid application of this standard requires that we find it not be met, but I feel that in these circumstances, that a rigid application of the standard is not necessary or right, especially with our ability to modify the proposal a little bit and think of the two requests in a way that had they come in at the same time, we would be talking about something I think most of us probably would agree, if not all of us, was a minimal change necessary to accomplish some good things on the property. And so if we get to the point where we can make a favorable motion that replaces some of the impervious space with pervious space, as we've discussed, I think that that softer application of this standard, as well as the next one, would justify granting the relief. So I can find this standard met under a softer reading with some changes in the proposal.
I'm fine with that as well. I agree.
With changes, yes.
I think I agree with Matt on this one.
Standard number seven, which is the last standard, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. This one, again, going back to the fact that I think we would have been in a much better position to have everything before us so that we would have known what the true minimum was and could have had a better position on that, but I believe that requesting an impervious surface variation for this particular project is where I have the greatest issue, so I do not believe that this standard is met.
So I'll just go ahead and disagree with you for the reasons I already said. I believe they're met if we restructure the proposal a little bit.
Do I need to say?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that you were not just a general nod. That was a, "Yes, I agree with Scott."
That's a, "Yes, I agree."
Okay.
I'm letting Scott.
I agree with Scott as well.
Same. The only thing I just want to mention is, as I look at the site plan again, there's no walkway shown from the garage to the house. So is the site plan missing a walkway from the garage to the house? Has it been...
They used steppers. It was somewhere in the...
It was in the...
It was somewhere in the docks that they had used steppers or were using steppers.
Okay, all right. Because I know steppers don't count for impervious surface, because that is another opportunity for them, right, to reduce their impervious surface, is to take that concrete sidewalk on the, I don't know which way north is, south side of the house and turn that into steppers. And then now they've met the requirements handily because none of that area counts, not just 20%, but none of it. And I think they would be, because they specifically ask to, that they don't have access around the house, which is why they're asking specifically for the door from the backyard into the basement, I think it makes sense to get rid, to omit that sidewalk on that whole south side, steppers. So that would mean a reduction in impervious surface that is much closer to the 45% rather than the 50%, in my opinion.
So does that put you at a, if that's a condition we oppose, does that put you in favor of the project?
That puts me in favor if that number gets low enough. It needs to be closer to 45 than to 50 because I think they have real opportunities for getting there and have the ability to make decisions.
Steppers are nice.
I think steppers are great.
So we have sort of split votes on a couple of the standards. So if we want to make a motion encouraging less pervious surface on the property, I don't know how someone wants to make that, if they want to make it based on a percentage, which kind of becomes a nightmare for staff to then have to figure out if they want to make it on specific items on the property, which again, kind of becomes a nightmare.
Yeah, the problem with that is, I mean, if it's possible, I mean, without sitting here and doing the math and having it guaranteed, say they went to steppers all over the place, maybe they get to keep their deck. I mean, you know what I mean? It gets, it all gets kind of...
Right, which is why I think a percentage probably makes more sense than telling them what to do, because then they can make the decisions on how they want to choose to spend that.
Yeah.
So the question is, how much of a percentage more do they get? One, two, three?
Melissa's going to do some calculations here.
Melissa looks so happy.
She thought with just two cases, it was going to be an easy night for her. So we're just making it difficult.
Normally, we'd be out in half an hour.
I know.
It's the way these meetings have been going.
Restaurant special uses is where it's at, because those people don't show up to protest restaurants and...
Evanston, dining capital of the North Shore.
Yep. Yes, Scott?
All right. Rather than put the pressure on Melissa right here and now to get this accurate, can we, maybe this is a question for counsel, can we make a motion that contemplates some percentage number that Melissa will calculate and communicate and that we'll finalize in the minutes after today, but that deals with sort of the removal of these three, I think we've mentioned three potential impervious spaces, the deck/stairs, the front walkway, and the sidewalk way? So if those were removed and made pervious, then what the percentage of impervious space that we'd allow on the property would be? Is that, as a point of procedure, acceptable?
Don't look at me. I'm not...
Yeah, no, I'll look into, no, I was, I'll look into it. I don't think we're able to do that via minutes, but I'll look into it right now.
Okay.
Do you want to take a recess to allow her to...
What has been done previously is moving on to the next case and then coming back to this one. I think Chairman Rogers has done that, or if you want to take a recess, we can...
If it makes any difference, if the front walk becomes pavers, the deck becomes pavers, and then the walk leading around the side of the house becomes steppers, it would get them to under 47%.
Done. Forty-seven.
Okay, great.
All right.
So...
Let's get a motion.
So with all of that...
Does the deck count toward lot coverage as well? Do we need, I mean, that's one of...
No.
Okay.
No. So with that...
I don't want to ask you.
I'm sorry, what?
Nothing. Never mind.
With the determination that the impervious surface can be reduced to 47%, where a maximum of 45% is allowed, if the sidewalk is replaced, or the sidewalk is replaced with steppers, the deck and the front sidewalk are replaced by pervious pavers, that would be what we would need to do in order to get it down to 47, which was just two percentage points over what is allowed by the zoning code. So with that, I will ask if there is a motion.
I'll make a motion that I think works for a majority of us. So I'll move in the matter of ZBA 14ZMJV-0124 with respect to the property at 1231 Hinman Avenue, that we approve the variations requested with the condition that the impervious space request be reduced to a maximum of 47% impervious space on the property.
Second. Condition with the construction...
Oh, right, and that the property otherwise be developed consistent with the evidence submitted and testimony given.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve 1231 Hinman with the condition that the maximum pervious surface coverage be capped at 47%. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. So with a five to one vote, the motion carries, and Melissa will be able to work with you on exactly what the numbers were we figured out here. So good luck with your project. We have one other matter on the agenda this evening, which is 715 Milburn Street. If Melissa would please read that into the record.
Andrew Venimore, zoning specialist, applies for major zoning relief to reconstruct a one-car detached garage. The applicant requests a .9-foot rear yard setback where three feet is required, zoning code section 6828C4, and four feet between the principal... Between the principal and accessory structure where 10 feet is required, zoning code section 6462C. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application dated September 5th, 2014, standards form, zoning... 5th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated July 11th, 2014, site plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes of October 8th, 2014.
Thank you. At this point, if I could ask anybody who may be speaking to us on the matter of 715 Milburn, please be sworn, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you, and if you would please come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Venimore, V-E-N-A-M-O-R-E, 602 Academy Drive, Northbrook.
Thank you. If you would please tell us about the proposal.
Thank you, Chair. The case before you this evening is a replacement structure that is very decrepit at the moment. It actually has a flat roof, which has, over time, started leaking. In fact, the owner has, as we were chatting about it further this evening, just suggested that when he bought the home 20 years ago, it probably would have been more ideal for them to have replaced it at that point. It is, it was somewhat decrepit back then, and it certainly is in much worse shape as we stand here today. So our project seeks to replace that rather unusually shaped structure. As you can see by the survey, it's somewhat of a garage with somewhat of a storage space on the end. It is a fraction over 24 feet long, 24 foot 4 inches long. Our project will replace that with a 24-foot-long garage. The proposed size is minimally larger than what's there, as you can see, because we have two of those kind of cutouts on the corners. We're squaring it off. The idea behind that is just to make it a far more practical structure for a vehicle. Obviously, it's not being used for vehicle storage at the moment. It's in such bad shape, so the idea is to actually have it for vehicle storage with a little bit of storage on the end. There was, right at the beginning of the project, some slight consideration given to actually having a two-car structure, but that would have really kind of messed up the look of the rear yard, would have made the coverage numbers way different, and so the idea was just to kind of keep it, for all intents and purposes, somewhat similar to what's there now. So the variations, I have a rear yard setback of .9 of a foot instead of three feet, and as Melissa mentioned, I have a separation of structures of four foot instead of 10 foot. The setback, as it currently stands now from the back of the house to the property line, is right on 16 feet. There is very little opportunity to do anything here that would be even slightly conforming. These requests are large, but there's really not a heck of a lot else that can be done here, and all we're doing is replacing what's there. So essentially, what's driving this from a hardship standpoint is, excuse me, is the nature of the lot. It's 2,000 square foot smaller than what the R1 zoning district permits, but as you can see from the plan that was provided by staff, the map of the area, there are quite a few lots in this block covered by Arrington on the east, Sherman on the west, Central on the north, and Milburn on the south, where at some point in the early part of the 1900s, some owners decided to sell off the rear portions of their lot and create other lots. It's what's driven this home's request, because there's basically not a lot of room to do anything on this property. We have, however, and that was part of the consideration about not going to a larger garage than just this one and a half, one car with storage, been able to keep under all of the other coverages. We're not over on lot coverage, we're not over on impervious. So we are just here replacing that structure and kind of driving at those same non-conforming conditions that exist on the property right now. Be happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
Yeah, so the distance between the garage and the principal structure, obviously, the garage is being put in the same place but requires the variation. What, if anything, are you doing in your project to address the fire hazard that having the accessory structure near the principal structure, too close to the principal structure, imposes?
The process that's already underway through the building department has, is requiring us, of course, to put one-hour firewall on the side adjacent to the house, and I'm pretty sure we're having to put one on the north side as well, just because of the adjacency to that neighboring property. There is nothing there. There is a driveway into that home that fronts on the street to the east, but the building code is requiring us to make those changes.
Also to note for the record, I did not mention earlier, everyone received a copy of an email, which is the neighbor to the north...
To the north.
Who does support the project.
I'm not sure if building code actually addresses this, but Jill have a one-hour fire rating on the soffits too, right?
Yes, correct. That is something that Dean has picked up.
And just for the record, I know I saw it somewhere in here, the requested square footage increase is around 17 to 20 square feet just by squaring that off. Is that correct?
Correct. We're actually, if you add both those, the structure and the kind of little attachment on the end, is 23, 24 foot 4 inches. We're actually shimmying that back a little to 24, but filling in those gaps is what's driving that additional square footage.
Are there any other additional questions from Mr. Venimore? Hearing none. Anything you'd like to say in summation?
No, I've said everything. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. I think that this particular project is kind of a no-brainer. We aren't looking to really increase anything. We're looking to square off an existing dilapidated structure, keeping setbacks basically where they are now. It actually probably makes the structure safer because it probably does not have a one-hour firewall constructed in it right now. So overall, I would say this is definitely an improvement on this property. But we will go through our standards for variations. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. Quite the contrary, it will probably only make everybody much happier, and especially the enjoyment portion, being able to look at a newer structure as opposed to something that is dilapidated. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I believe I heard testimony that it really is not used as a garage currently, so actually by putting a true functioning garage into this space, we are getting a car off the street, which is one of the things that the zoning ordinance, or the comprehensive general plan, the zoning ordinance, asks us to do, and so that as well as just general upkeep of property is something that we do encourage. So I believe standard two is met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. We had testimony that the distance from the back of the house to the alley is about 16 feet, which is actually probably about the width of an average alley, so it's not very wide at all. The fact that they are looking to build in the exact same space that is there, I think, shows that they really don't have a lot of options, so I believe standard number three is met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. It sounds like this particular structure is on its last leg, and anything that could be built there obviously would improve the applicant's ability to use that space, preferably for parking a car, but also to provide storage for the necessities that they have for their home, so that standard is met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Again, since this is not a garage that is being rented out or anything like that, the standard really only comes into play where someone is trying to create additional income for themselves, but for something that they will be using for themselves, the standard is met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The structure, I think I saw in our notes, it is believed probably was built about the time of the house and is probably original to the house, and we know the current owner has not owned it since the house was built, so I believe that this standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. Again, talking about we really are not intruding any further into any of the yards closer to the house or anything. We're basically squaring off and replacing an existing structure that has seen better days, so I believe standard number seven has also been met. With that, I will ask if there is a motion for approval of 715 Milburn Street.
I move in the matter of ZBA 14ZMJV-0131 with regard to 715 Milburn Street, that we approve the variation requested, subject to the condition that the property be developed consistent with the evidence submitted and testimony given.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the requested variations for 715 Milburn Street, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? With six votes in favor and none against, your project is approved. Good luck with your project. Thank you. That concludes the items that are on our agenda this evening. The one additional item that was on for discussion was the proposed change to our rules. Someone decided vacation was more important yesterday than working on my rules, so we will... I wanted to ask counsel, do we have to present those and then vote on them at a next meeting? I'm assuming is the way those have to be approved.
Yeah, we'd have to present them and then...
Okay, so we will present those at our next meeting for approval at the following meeting.
And just to update everyone, it is really a complete overhaul of the rules. There are many things that were outdated, and we're also looking at possibly changing a few things to make things run a little bit smoother, so we'll probably have a decent discussion about it.
So will you give it to us, like if we pick up a board packet, can we look at it in advance of next meeting?
Yeah, we will not be voting on anything next week.
Oh, but just to look at it so we could discuss it at the meeting.
Yeah, we can actually send it out to everybody. We will have to present it officially at a meeting so that it can be voted on the subsequent meeting.
But the discussion is going to be at the subsequent meeting, correct? You're not expecting us to discuss it at the same time you present it?
Correct, right. So everybody will have a two-week, three-week period to read through. If there are questions, I encourage people at that point to reach out to staff if they don't understand why something is changing. Like I said, most of it is because of things that are outdated or things that we should be doing or best practices that we are not doing.
I assume we have no meeting on November 4th, which is election day?
No, I think we do.
We do have a meeting that night.
Ah, I will be unable to attend.
I think we have pretty full agendas coming up.
Yes, we do.
So with all of that discussion, is there anything else to bring before the board? Hearing nothing, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We stand adjourned until our meeting on November...
Fourth.
Fourth.